There we go.
All right, I'm going to call this Planning Commission meeting to order at 2:00 PM on April Fool's Day. Why don't we do a roll call, Stephanie?
Oh, sorry.
No worries, no worries.
Commissioner Baugh?
Here.
Commissioner Byers?
Here.
Commissioner Hall?
Here.
Commissioner McLeanah?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Riggsby?
Here.
Vicki, is that you on the cellphone?
I think it is.
Yeah?
Okay.
Ah, there we go.
Okay. Present is Mr. Williams via Zoom. Also present is Stephanie and Alex and Britta for the Community Development Department and Zach Cook for legal. You do have a quorum.
Excellent. At this time, I would ask anybody to declare conflicts of interest if they have any.
None.
None. Seeing none, we'll move on to certification of compliance with Resolution 2025-01. Stephanie?
I do certify that the meeting and property were posted in accordance with Resolution 2025-01 and Section 5440 in the municipal code.
Awesome. Approval of agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Baugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Byers?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McLeanah?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Riggsby?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, awesome. We have an agenda. Let's move to the next item, approval of minutes for our last meeting on March 4th. Any changes or corrections to the minutes?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented from March 4th, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's move to a roll call vote. Seeing none?
Commissioner Baugh? Commissioner Byers?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McLeanah?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Riggsby?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
Motion carries with two abstaining.
Awesome. All right, let's move into, let's move into public input. So at this time, this is an opportunity for anybody in the public to come and comment on any item that is not on our agenda today to bring to the commission. At this time, they can come forward. I don't know if we have anybody signed up. Are you, it looks like we're applicants. Applicants. And there's the-
And he's on for the case.
Okay, sounds good then. We'll go ahead and close public input since there's no public. And move on to our quasi judicial public hearing, the first one, mixed use PUD zoning. Stephanie, will you take this one?
Yes. So before us today, we have James Paxton on behalf of the First Baptist Church. They're coming through with a site plan to place a single-family dwelling along on the property with the other developed uses. In doing so, it has been determined that we do need to have a designation of their planned unit development overlay zone. With that being heard, they are requesting the mixed use. So inside the case study today, it provided you pictures of their site plan, the current site, and then copies of the code and what a mixed use designation would be. The applicants are here to present and answer any questions.
Great. Mr. Paxton, do you want to come on down to the front? And then anybody else that might be speaking on this case can come on down as well. And we'll have you raise your hand, say your name, and you'll tell the truth, nothing but the truth. All right, thank you, Mr. Paxton. Will you be speaking as well? Okay, sounds good.
And Chairman Riggsby, before we go any further, on your stations, you see there's a standalone document. The one that contained in the packet did not bring forward all of the ordinance. I did catch that early this morning and needed to justify and rectify, get you the correct document. So when referring to everything, if we want to look at the standalone document, not the packet.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. Mr. Paxton, what are you hoping to do today, or what is the Baptist Church hoping to do today?
The Baptist Church is located in a housey, affordable town. This piece of property is now down on meander, and it was in a place that where the river flooded, and it flooded three different pieces of property. This one was not damaged significantly, but the owner of the property, because of various insurance issues, has said that he would like to donate it. And we're at that place where there's nothing free. When you think it is, it's not. We're estimating from where it sits right now to getting it permitted and all of the work that needs to be done to it is somewhere around $80,000. But that's still probably $150,000 less than if you went to try to buy it. The whole goal of this is that for the church to have someplace that as we're recruiting and looking at additional ministerial staff, that it would be an incentive where we could provide this piece of property for housing. It's a 2,400 square foot, four-bedroom, three-bath. It has decks, it has porches, it has replaced windows. It had been upgraded quite substantially. So it's not some old trailer that we're dragging and they're upside down and hoping to make it look right. It will, it will be on the far end of the property where if you're going down Cree Meadows, you won't even see where it is at the far end of the property.
Okay.
That's the goal of it. It's not we want to go on the rental business. We're looking for a way that we can subsidize staff people when they come to work.
Thank you for that, Mr. Paxton. Before we move forward, I do want to clarify because we might be talking about two different properties within this request. So the property we have on our agenda today is 270 Country Club, where I believe the primary location of the Baptist Church is.
That's correct.
Okay. You mentioned meander.
Well, that's where it's sitting right now.
Okay, so you're going to move the house from meander to-
The church property, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification there. So we're still talking about a PUD zoning-
Correct.
For 270 Country Club.
The history of this is that PUD zoning was done clear back, some of you will remember Roy Crocker, who owned that property and was planning to have apartments and motels and all kinds of developments on there, and got to the place where that wasn't working. The church bought it from him. And in our case now, we're thankful that we never changed that zoning from a PUD so that it would allow for this use.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'm sure there'll be some more questions from the commission, but I did want to get that clarification before we went forward. At this time, anything else you just, it's the zoning delegation that you would like to change and then the site plan approval.
No, we don't want to change the zoning. We just want to use the PUD and put the property on the, I mean, the building on that property.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're looking for a designation. So a PUD is a claraboint term that is a catch-all. It needs to be specified whether it's commercial, residential, or mixed use, or industrial. This type of use is being requested to be a mixed use, which would incorporate the commercial retail that's located on the property, the church, and then the intended development to add the housing unit.
Okay, thanks Stephanie for that clarification. All right. At this time, then we'll open it up for public comment. I don't believe there's anybody here for public comment, but-
Actually, Mr. Jeffrey Johnson, did you have any comments you'd like to make? The public hearing is now open.
I'm trying to figure out where Cree Meadows Drive is.
I think that was a, this is, this property is for Country Club, so I think Cree Meadows was a, it's across the street from Cree Meadows.
Golf course.
I understand that, so but he, so where on Country Club Drive are they talking about moving this house to?
The church property.
Is it by 107 Hilltop Drive? I mean, by Hilltop Drive, or is it on the other end of the church?
I believe it, it's-
It's by Hilltop.
By Hilltop?
Yes, sir.
And the improvement survey that you have shows that location.
Yeah. Mr. Johnson, anything else to comment or add, or?
So is it just going to be this one single-family resident?
That is the application I believe in front of us is just one single-family location. For this site plan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. And then we'll open it up. Staff want to give their case summary, and then we can go into commissioner questions.
So for this hearing today, we did mail out 18 letters. There were zero returns and zero written comments. The staff analysis and recommendation is as follows. The purpose of this review is to relieve demonstratable adverse impacts to the development upon public investments in roads, drainage facilities, sewage facilities, et cetera, to conserve the value of buildings and to ensure that all regulations of the articles are upheld. After reviewing the application and existing conditions, staff finds that the proposed request appears to be generally consistent with the village code, and hereby recommends approval of the proposed site plan to develop a single-family dwelling unit on the property and to rezone the zoning district to an MPUD. If approved, the council will hear this request to finalize the zoning designation. The following permits will be required to place a manufactured home from the Village of Riodoso Building Department, a driveway permit, forestry permit, grading and drainage, a placement permit approval, and utility installation. The following permit will be required to be issued by the state and New Mexico Manufactured Housing Division, the blocking permit. If approved, we do recommend the following conditions to be applied. Applicant shall apply all necessary, apply for all necessary building permits for the construction or placement of the home within six months, and to have construction completed within one year. The applicant shall make no changes in the plan without the Planning Commission's approval. And by accepting the site plan, the applicant agrees to comply within a timely manner set forth.
Thank you. All right, we'll open it up for the applicant for commissioner questions.
I don't so much have a question.
Yeah.
I have a comment, but because of the, there is a lot of good property there. And my hope is that, as you're well aware, that we're, the community needs workforce-type housing, whether it be for the church employees or anybody. But I'm, I would love to see, see this done in a way that would allow for other units to be placed out. That's what your long-term plan is and that, you know, not just one house, but multiple houses. And like I said, whether they're for church staff or whatever, but-
That's been a lot of our discussion as this has gone along, but we're kind of afraid to tell you that. We don't want to muddy the water with this first thing, but you're exactly right. There is room down there to put another couple easily of something similar. We, we may have some problem from the church perspective of turning that into rental property as opposed to church property. So that would be something we'd have to evaluate eternally.
Yeah. So point being that you are looking at this and as far as placement where it allows for other-
It does.
Okay.
And a question for me, you mentioned a four-bedroom home that was impacted by flooding. It's on meander. This application is for a manufactured home? Is that property that was damaged a manufactured home, or is it?
It's a double line.
Okay. And will it be placed on a, I assume it will be placed on a permanent foundation?
Skirting and porches. All the stuff to make it look like a residence.
Perfect, thank you.
So my question is, is looking, I know you need a driveway for that. Is that driveway to that home going to be off Cedar Creek?
Correct.
Okay.
It's approved by the street department.
Yeah, we haven't done any of that yet, but that's the intent that it would be down off of Cedar.
Would there be, and I don't know whether this is a staff question or not, if they're looking for the potential for, say you have three or four more homes there, would the driveway permit be designed such that it'd be a logical entrance rather than just, you know, one little turnoff and a goat trail, a bunch? That's what I'm looking for. If there's a master plan to add to it, to make sure the driveway permit, the driveway that you're going to put in there is going to accommodate that rather than just, I mean, there's plenty of them up and down Country Club where just one little driveway going to the house, but if you're actually going to build more than that, you might want to look at something a little different. And I would assume that the road department would be able to give you guidance on that.
And we would wait to see what they say about it, but it does allow for a way to potentially put a driveway that would service more than one residence.
And that's what I, that would be my recommendation that you do that if you, even if your plan's going to, it's easier to do it now than come back five years later and try to go, oh, now I need to widen this driveway. Get it in place.
There is a slope to the property, but it's not to the extent that you can't do some cut and fill in the driveway. It would not be a steep driveway.
That would be my only, you know, only insight that I would have to that is a, you know, plan for the future and have those discussions rather than just, you know that you're going to have more there at some time. It's, it's just smarter to do, and it'll be cheaper to do it now than if you were going to do it five years from now.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, Bill, I appreciate that comment. Just for the board, while it's probably smart to give them that advice, we got to react to the request in front of us, which is one dwelling. But I think that's probably advice well taken by the applicant.
Thank you.
Other questions from the commission?
Nothing.
Nothing. Wow, first time ever. Josh has nothing.
It's a slow day. I can't, I can't help it. I can't get started today.
Fair enough, fair enough. Nothing, okay.
I'd be looking for a motion if there's nothing else for the applicants. Based on the foregoing findings of facts per 54-105 and 54-67 of the village code, I move to grant the requested site plan and concept approval and recommend approval of the M-PUD zoning designation to village council for adoption for case number SP 2025-31 with the conditions stated in the case report.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Byers?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McLeanah?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Riggsby?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you all for coming in. Next steps, the designation would need to go in front of council for their approval. We just recommended approval for the designation. But the site plan is approved. Unless you're not allowed to sign it. Yeah, you never want to have the signature. Thank you, Mr. Paxton. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Let's move to what we have next, which is no longer quasi judicial, but a community development report. But it's also like a 54 rewrite. Help me understand.
Sure, we'll start with, this is a discussion item, teeing up a revision to the code regarding building materials. So as, as you're aware, we did just do Chapter 54, and this was a spot that we did not give enough attention to. And so we are coming back to that. We are getting more folks moving forward with rebuilding after fires and floods of last year. And some of the things that are being considered and proposed to us for residential and also in the, in the commercial realm is metal buildings. And metal being the, I guess, the finished exterior material on that. And so that's a big part of this conversation, but, but also not the entire part of it as well. Just opening up the conversation around having, moving away from what I guess would be the, I'll call traditional building styles, materials here, here in the village, and, and giving them a refresh and an update. And so our thought at this point in time, with the way the code is currently written up, it does grant discretion to the planning staff to approve something that is characteristic of something in the area. Although we welcome granting us that discretion, we also sometimes, we always will use it with discretion for, for certain, but also feel that having more guidance on, on what that means may, may be helpful. And so kind of our ask here is, is the thought of that we would establish a working group, a subcommittee of, of the commission to give this a bit more, more look along the lines of what went, with the short-term rental revisions to gauge your own opinions, your own thoughts, for us as the staff to bring in the best practices from our professional organizations, and also looking around at other communities that, that you may identify for us to use as examples, good, bad. And then to bring forward if we need to engage other individuals or organizations in the community in a more specified manner to do that, and then to bring something forward for the complete commission and then the council to, to then hopefully review and adopt.
Thank you. So the purpose of today's discussion is maybe just talk high level and then to form a subcommittee or a working group is the request from the-
Yes, sir, that is the, the general ask.
Okay. I think that's fair. And this is not for any one specific type of siding from one manufacturer, but the thought process is similar to the views that we saw from the metal manufacturer that came and spoke to us?
Either, yes, for, for that, there are a number of materials that are out there as well to perhaps investigate and so either to figure out if, yes, I guess from the standpoint of, of how either wide open the door we want to make it or how we're- How, how much, how, yes, how much you want to open the door.
Yeah.
I'll put it that way. And then, yeah.
And what's in our packet right now is the current 54 language that does not allow for raised rib metal, V metal, R panel siding types, correct?
That is correct.
Correct, yes. Yep. Awesome. All right, well, commissioners, any strong thoughts that you want to start this discussion with or opinions?
I think the only thing, I guess the only, the only kind of question or observation I've had is the, the storage container building, their building in Midtown down there. I mean, you look at the exterior that they've put on that, that's actually a lot better than when they started, trust me. But is that the type thing that is, is that allowed or not allowed, or is that a special, was that a special exemption to get to that point, or how was that?
So we worked, so here's, we worked with, with the builders, with the owners of that property. I've not been down there in, in a little bit. They are, I think they still have a little bit more of exterior to do to, to get that done. But that was something that we worked with them, that we felt that that was, what they were proposing fit the definition of characteristic for, for the area. Which is also why I am happy to entertain more, more thoughts and more opinions, and then also to have more, much more guidance, if, if not, you know, stronger code language toward, toward that.
Where they started, it just, you know, when they were putting it up, it was just the metal storage containers. And there was no exterior on them. And you look at it and go, yeah, I get that. If you want to do that, go build that out in the country. But, you know, my concern for that was, it was prior to them doing the exterior, was so out of character for particularly the movie industry that does a lot of filming down through the, you know, it would stick out like a sore thumb. I mean, right now, we've got that character of a-
Of a Hallmark movie.
Yeah, a Hallmark movie or an old, old western town. And that, that would be, that was my concern with that, with that. I think they're making, they've made an amazing amount of progress, but that's the only thing that, you know, that would, for me, I'd not like to see that. I don't care if they want to build a structure out of containers, but the facade has to be, you know-
The facade unfortunately couldn't have been placed until they were, or put up until they were placed. So it's, it's a fine line of wait and see.
Yeah, and, and like I said, when it first started, oh yeah, it was, it was crazy all over social media. But I mean, they've done a good job on that, but that's something that when you talk about the, the character, you want to maintain that character. Like I said, the structural material, yeah, they're great to build with.
Are you saying it looked like a train wreck in town? Is that what you're trying to say?
Well, maybe. It looked like four boxcars that just kind of, you know, yeah. But I mean, but that's the sort of thing that, I don't care what people want to build that, as long as it's up to code and all that, but you want, you don't want to lose that character. I mean, that's-
I guess the bigger point is that how it's coming to finish-
Yeah.
Might be an appropriate use of metal siding.
Exactly, that's what I was saying, because it is metal siding.
Right.
I'm in the metal building, a metal building for a house, trying to, not really in the middle, not really in the beginning actually, but I think if this moves forward, I think that maybe we should institute a certain percentage of the building be covered with rock or, or some kind of wood or something just to break up a total metal building sitting in the middle of town.
Right.
You know, whether it's 30% rock or, you know, wood or something, just to kind of, kind of get us back to being in the mountainous area, not some barn in the middle of town.
Stucco, wood, metal.
Yeah, the metal building.
They're actually pretty easy, putting wood cladding on it.
Yes.
So-
That looks really nice. You want to show that to the rest of the committee?
Colorado has gotten into doing this rusted corrugated tin.
Yes.
And that's a municipal building in Creed, Colorado. And it is a lot of what you're saying, part of it, you know, using that for a wainscot and then-
Sure.
Stucco and wood details, you know, yeah, I think it, I agree.
I was in Durango last weekend, same thing.
Lot of that in Colorado.
And, you know, they incorporate more of the, have more of a building standard where everything is, I mean, whether it's Walmart or it's Walgreens or whoever it is, there's a building standard there. They all go by. It's more of a mountainous-looking cabin-y feel of everything. We don't, we don't do that here, but wish we did.
Looks good with the stucco, but they got to break it up.
Mixed metals or mixed materials.
My metal wasn't pushing the corrugated, rusted corrugated.
No.
They weren't offering that, but I think that should be allowed. My metal doesn't have to offer it, somebody else can.
I think the worry about the patina'd rusted tin is that if you do it, if you don't do it as well as they did it with the mixed materials, it makes it look like a rundown shack.
Well, I agree, but Lowe's did it.
Yeah, yeah, they did.
Lowe's grocery store, the Taco Bell.
Yeah.
There's a whole face of it that is rusted metal.
So I, I, I think largely we're, we think it's a great idea. I know that there's probably insurance ramifications of having a metal siding or a cement board siding compared to a wood siding, which would only go over well, given the context of the last year. So Alex, what would you hope for the committee? Do we need to make a motion to form a subcommittee to get into specifics? Because I think largely we're all on the same page, that this is a good-
We can either bring it back, or if, if, if we bring it back to where everybody has a correspondence, we'll have to have it published- a course on it, we'll have to have it published on the agenda. If you guys want to look through and bring things in, we can do a subcommittee pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, it can only consist of three of you, and then we can bring it forth for a full revision like we did the short-term rentals.
I think a working group is what I would recommend, because if you say we want metal siding, that could be...
Yeah, that opens up the can.
It'll look like a can, perhaps.
Yeah, exactly, literally.
Yeah.
So, I, I would ask maybe that we have a motion to form a subcommittee or a working group, however we want to phrase it, and then if folks are interested to...
I'd be interested.
To raise their hand to do that, so. I don't know if there's a motion that's...
I'll do it, I don't care.
You don't really need a motion.
Don't need a motion.
I want a motion.
I got two more hours left in my day, I'll do something.
This is the only side of the room doing them anyways.
So, are you volunteering?
I'll volunteer.
So, Josh, a volunteer, anybody else?
I'm having hip surgery. So, maybe I may be having...
Oh, you got to do us.
Don't lean on that, man.
I, I would normally raise my hand because I'm a sucker for a good committee, but I think my wife would kill me, given that I'm the current...
You're now a daddy?
Yeah, and I'm the only one supposed to be watching the kid, so, yeah, exactly, Daddy Daycare started.
Oh, come on, my hip, your baby.
So, we have one, we'll need two other volunteers.
I'll volunteer.
Do they have to be on the, yes.
Yes.
They got to be on the, they got to be on the commission, yeah. We can bring in others.
Come on, Bart, just jump in there, man.
I'll jump in.
You got nothing else to do with it?
I know, so we got two...
Why not?
Bill?
So, it's Bill and...
You, you have plenty of time, don't you, coming up? Race season's not coming up.
All right, pump me down.
Thank you, Bart, I appreciate it.
I have to pull, I twist your arm, I'm sorry.
Vicky, did you want to, did you want to serve on the subcommittee? I'll offer it up to you before Bart.
She says, Vicky, who?
This suspense is killing me, no, I'll take silence as a politely decline, I appreciate it, Bart, Bill, and Josh.
She wants to...
I appreciate that.
I'd be glad to.
You'd be glad to, you want to serve on the subcommittee?
Sure.
Okay, great.
All right, good.
Okay, so, no Bart?
No Bart, Bill, Josh, and Vicky.
That's cool.
All right, is that anything else on that topic, or maybe a larger community development update?
Um, yeah, in general, from the, I don't think there's really anything that I wanted to direct your attention to in, in the rest of the report in, in there, it's there, but I would entertain questions if you have anything in there.
Uh, yes, today's the first day of the new short-term rental ordinance, I think we're still looking to source software that was kind of foundational to the...
It's approved this morning.
So, we, yes, we did put out an RFP for the software, we received three responses, of which we were able to select, identify Decker Technologies as, as the contractor we're going to move forward with, and so that will be on the council agenda next week.
It's the same software we were hoping to get, right?
Same software that we've been looking at for a while.
Yeah.
Um, and we'll have them under contract and get up to speed on that with the anticipated date for going live on that July first. In the interim there, we will still be working with our current software, as well as getting up to speed on, on the rest of, with, with the new software, and then from the standpoint of the rest of the ordinance that came into, into effect, we will be, the biggest thing in there is the fire pits, those places that, the short-term rentals that had a fire pit permit, those are now null and void, and we will be issuing a refund for those, we think they're somewhere in the range of twenty-five to fifty of those, that will have to be...
Really, that's it?
That's it. We're, we're a little, we're a little skeptical on that, but, which is why we're, we're double checking with that. We are also working closely with dispatch to be sure that the calls that they're getting that we can monitor, that are short-term rentals, as well, that we are identifying those to see if there's any violations in there, and we keep getting, we are getting some questions from operators, management companies on exactly what, what this means, and we think we've got a pretty good hold on it, but until we have some things tried out, you never really know what's going to happen, but we feel pretty good about it.
Thank you.
I would offer one thing that we probably, for the short-term rentals, just based on the conversation I had with a short-term renter this weekend, when we're in Level Two, that is not well displayed or posted in the short-term rentals. The guy was, he was smoking outside, talked to him a bit, he put a cigarette out, obviously, but he said, it just wasn't there, he took me inside, and we looked at it, said, nah, there was nothing about Level Two, and the same sort of thing with wildlife, I have wildlife in the area, people feeding them, most people you can talk to them and they understand, but there's a few that are belligerent, but those sort of things, because they have an increased fine, I mean, it's five hundred dollar fine for smoking, five hundred dollar fine for feeding the animals, they need to be more aware of that, and it's, some of it is, it's just not, it's just not prominent in whatever these management companies or owners are putting in the short-term rentals, particularly the Level Two stuff. Wildlife, yeah, they're people going to do what the hell they want, which is sad, but the Level Two, particularly because of the fires, that's, you know, like I said, and the guy was very, I mean, he said, damn, sorry, didn't know, but it also wasn't prominent in the rental that he was in.
Thank, thank you for that, we will, we did communicate that out to all of our people that we have information for, but we will be much more adamant about providing them both something they can post and that they do post it, because I, I definitely see where, see where you're coming from and, and agree, and we need to make it very clear from the standpoint, not just to say Level Two, but this is what that means to you, to you.
Yeah, just as I said, and you should be able to pick that, doing the annual inspections, you should be able to inspect and see that they've got all their proper notification out there, so, but that, like I said, that was just personal stuff, I was like, yeah, that really needs to be kind of more out there, because that communication, people need to be aware of it. The good people, you can talk to them, but there are some you can't.
Right, right, yeah. Um, do you mind providing an update on the Meacham property, whose address I never forget or never remember?
Six oh three.
Yes, the Rock House, lived here my whole life, just as a reminder, just to know the address.
Sure, um, all the property, all the, all the homes have been set on their foundation, HomeSpot, the contractor that is doing the work, that is doing the work for the homes, they are working on getting things buttoned up in there. We are also, the gas is in place, I think the water is coming into place, where we are still struggling is with P N M to get them out there to, well, to sign off on, to get their people out there to install the electricity. As of last week, there are twenty-eight people on the waiting list for, for those homes, rent range between nine hundred for the two-bedroom units, probably coming in at twelve hundred-ish for the, the three-bedroom units.
Is that eight hundred or nine hundred plus utilities? Yes.
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 Okay.
In, in that, and depending on where P N M lands, and when we can finally get them out there, we are aiming for occupancy sometime next month.
And occupancy is still based upon gainfully employed within the village or Lincoln County?
Correct, within, I believe it's within the village.
Only within the village.
Within the village, for that, yes, yeah.
Awesome.
And we'll also confirm up when we can have, if, if any of you would like to, I'm not sure that we're going to have a public kind of open house kind of thing, but if any of you commissioners would like to get into those units, we'll see what we can do to, to make that happen.
Let's find the muddiest day, go over and check it out, you don't take?
With, yeah, yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe after, if it rains, and when it rains and snows this weekend, we'll, yeah.
See you Monday.
I appreciate that, okay, thanks, Alex. Any other questions for the community development department?
I think we've got it.
Awesome, seeing no more questions, no more report, we'll move to commissioner comments.
I already gave you mine.
Thank you, Bill, as always. No, no comments, Rick, any, any comments?
Come on, Rick, you hadn't been around forever, I'm sure you bottled it up over there.
Give us a report on the track.
It's going good, huh? Terry talking about that, too.
Should we just Google your name and see on the news, and we'll get our updates that way?
So, you just want to hear the horses are in the gate.
Well, you know, I was in McAllen for like three weeks, you were actually on the news down there, that's how I saw it. You know how proud I felt telling people I know him?
Oh, man.
We should be putting the Rose Track surface back next week, I was hoping for this week, but they didn't get there. They have a retention basin that's in the infield, which protects spaghetti flats and the sewer treatment plant and Highway Seventy Bridge. That is the most hideous thing you've ever seen, you know, it's...
No, you need that, you need to have.
Some good news, come together yesterday, Shane Garner will be working with the village for additional retention basins upstream from us.
Oh, okay, you mentioned him, yeah, that's awesome.
The mayor nailed him down yesterday, and he said, sure, that's got to happen.
Yeah.
The other thing, the Roswell disaster relief cleanup will cease this week, and everybody that's in Roswell will be coming this direction, and their deadline to clean the river from the top to the bottom is July one.
Yeah, I had heard that.
Well, and then, sorry, additional trash racks are going in everywhere, we're going to the line, our area wants FEMA leaves on the west end of the track and the west main entrance road as well with HESCO baskets, so, it's just always something.
Well, I appreciate that brief update, and I'm sure you're busy, so thank you for all your time here and everywhere else, so. I am getting those HESCO baskets in my house, too, so, I'll figure out in five years what to do with them when they're washed away, I guess, or useless, or whatever, but, yeah.
They've got really good reviews.
Have they?
They're, they're not to, they're to divert, not to stop.
Yeah, yeah.
Just diverting water, so.
Well, good, that's good to hear, because they showed me a photo, and I was like, so what do I do in five years, they're like, I don't know, not my problem.
Yours.
Yeah, so. Any other commission comments?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All right, all those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Vicky.
Thanks, Vicky.
Forty minutes.
Yay.
So, are you talking about baskets for those ones that they fill with...